Ashley's President's Day sale is extended. It's your last chance to save up to forty percent on select styles throughout the store. And through Monday, shop beds, starting at only three nineteen. Or buy today and get six years no interest with qualifying purchase. These furniture savings are extended for one final week. So hurry in to shop and save today. Only at a marriage's number one furniture and mattress store. Ashley in Maple Shade, Warminster and Pottstown. Online availability may vary. Some exclusions apply. See store for details.
If you have an unpaid debt to the IRS that you can't pay, please hear this special notice. Specially approved IRS relief programs designed to aid delinquent taxpayers are now in effect that can significantly improve your financial situation. Depending on your circumstances, you may qualify to have your tax problem resolved in your favor and may even have your back taxes reduced by thousands or eliminated entirely. A relief hotline has been established by Community Tax for you to call and see if you qualify at eight hundred five oh three fifty eight seventy nine. If you owe the IRS back taxes that you can't afford to pay, don't let the IRS trick you into thinking you-
Good evening. And welcome to the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting for Newtown Township. As I call this meeting to order, I would note that it's common practice that we have a moment of silence. And so if you would join me in a moment of silent reflection, maybe take a couple of deep breaths and just clear your mind for the meeting ahead. Thank you. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No special actions. I believe we could go right into Toll Brothers, four thirteen and Twining Bridge Road project. As we come together on this topic, I would like to thank everyone who's here for discussion of this topic this evening. I would note that we got about eighteen emails. And I guess we sent out about eighteen hundred letters and we got eighteen mail, eighteen emails back. So I can see we're setting up. Let me just, let me just turn it over for a moment to Mr. Sanders, our solicitor. Mr. Sanders, do you have any recommendations on how to proceed this evening?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. It's the board's option whether it wishes to entertain a motion first or whether it wishes to hear a presentation from the applicant who is here this evening and has prepared a presentation to the board and then perhaps make the appropriate motion prior to obtaining public comment on the matter.
So we have a choice to have our presenter go first. Anybody on the board feel strongly one way or another? You'd like to hear it first? Okay with that? I'm okay with that. So Mr. Edelman, I believe, right?
Correct.
Am I saying your name right?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Greg Edelman here on behalf of Toll Brothers. Thank you for the opportunity to present to the board this evening. We're here on a proposed settlement of litigation that transpired as a result of Toll Brothers' original submission in twenty nineteen of a conditional use application for the proposed development of a portion of the All Saints Cemetery. It's about a hundred and fifty-eight acres or so along Twining Bridge Road and Dorm Road, four thirteen in the township. Toll appeared before this board in twenty twenty to have a conditional use hearing, which the board tabled because of COVID, a decision on that application, and then rendered a decision in August of twenty twenty. So there was some delay as a result of the uncertainty of holding public meetings, either virtually or in person, when the pandemic initially began. The decision was issued in, written decision was issued in September of twenty twenty and Toll appealed that conditional use plan, which is shown on the board directly to my left, proposed the creation of forty-five single-family home lots. And the area that was to be disturbed comprised the overwhelming majority of the property going from Durham down Twining to the property boundary line. It was, according to Toll, and I also believe according to Township Engineers, compliant with zoning. And there were some bases that the board cited for its denial that Toll obviously disagreed with, which created the appeal. Subsequent to filing of the appeal, Toll approached the township with a request to engage in settlement discussions as Toll believed there is a better way to develop this property in terms of the conservation management approach. The property is in your CM Conservation Management Zone, which obviously by its namesake is proposing to try to conserve as much open space and agricultural soils as possible. However, the Conservation Management zoning forces an applicant to create very large, single-family lots, which is what Toll did, shown on the conditional use plan. As part of the settlement discussions, Toll believed that it could further cluster the proposed development, thereby increasing the amount of open space preserved, increasing the amount of agricultural soils preserved, and bringing the development further towards Durham Road as opposed to spreading it out across the site. So what Toll had proposed was a settlement plan, which is shown on the board to my far left, that takes the same number of units, forty-five, makes the lot sizes much smaller and clusters the overall project into the, I believe it's the northwestern corner of the property. And the plan that I've just put up highlights the differences between the original conditional use plan for which the appeal is pending and the proposed settlement plan. The overall original conditional use plan on the plan to my left is highlighted in an overlay of red font. And the proposed settlement plan is located, sorry, is indicated in the dark black font. So you can see the area to the south of the property, if I point correctly. And this location is where the original conditional use plan was proposing development. As you can see, based upon the darker font, there is no development proposed there in that area. The difference between the two plans, I believe, is significant. And I think it does further enhance the purposes of the Conservation Management Zone. In particular, while the density is the same, the typical lot size on the conditional use plan was thirty-five thousand square feet. Here in the settlement plan, the typical lot size is twenty thousand feet, square feet. So they've shrunk the lot sizes, which then allows you to cluster more. Same thing with the typical building envelope. Your zoning ordinance requires, it's very strange, requires a minimum building envelope of fifteen thousand square feet. You can't make it smaller. Whereas the settlement plan proposes to shrink that to eight thousand square feet. Again, thereby permitting more clustering and more concentration of the development to further preserve open space and agricultural soils. As a result of the increase in clustering, the open space that was proposed under the conditional use plan, which was eighty-eight point five acres, was increased by more than thirty acres to a total of a hundred and nineteen point ninety-eight or almost a hundred and twenty acres under the settlement plan. And consistent with that, your overall ag soils disturbance went down from thirty-five point three two acres under the conditional use plan. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Your overall existing farmland retained went up from thirty-eight point five one acres to fifty-nine point two acres. So again, another purpose of the Conservation Management District is to preserve farmland. In addition, your agricultural soils that are in the open space increased from seventy-six acres to a hundred and seven point four nine acres. If this board recalls, part of the conditional use plan proposed preserving agricultural soils, but including them within the individual lots, which is very hard to manage over time as individual homeowners buy their homes. It's a very tough enforcement mechanism for the township to prevent those soils from being disturbed. By clustering the lots, we've now preserved the ag soils in the large contiguous open space, so you know they will be forever there and undisturbed. In addition, another benefit under the settlement plan versus the conditional use plan was the total woodland disturbance went down by approximately an acre, about two point three to one point four. And then the big issues that we were faced with in terms of laying out this development as a settlement plan versus the conditional use plan were the accesses. If you recall, the original conditional use plan proposed two accesses onto Twining Bridge Road. The settlement plan does not have any full movement access onto Twining Bridge Road. Instead, it has an access proposed to be directly across from North Drive at the existing signalized access on Dorm Road on four thirteen. There are emergency accesses proposed as well. So that way, it's not the only singular access for health and safety reasons. You can see one is located at the cul-de-sac along Dorm Road. And then there's another one on the cul-de-sac by Twining Bridge Road. Very typical to most emergency access roads, we would propose that these would be gated or with a lock chain. It's a breakaway chain and the fire and emergency officials would have keys or whatever else the township would require in terms of standard, limiting the access to only emergency vehicles. In addition, the proposed settlement plan proposes almost a mile of trails to connect your existing trailway, to bring it around the perimeter of the property, to allow for future connections, depending upon where the township wants to extend it. So that overall trail was not included in the conditional use plan, but it is included as part of the settlement plan. And then lastly, the thing that I wanted to highlight was the overall open space area. We have a plan. The plan to my far left, in the area that's shaded all in gray, is the open space area that would be offered for dedication to the township. This could be used for passive open space or recreation. It could be used for active recreation. That would be up to whatever the township desired. But it's a very large contiguous open space parcel consisting of just about ninety-nine acres, directly adjacent to this complex. So it's an ideal area of land for the township to hold, use as they see fit now and into the future for whatever needs you may have. It also has some natural resources. There's a stream corridor, riparian corridor running down through the middle of the property as well. So there's certainly natural features that are being preserved that will remain undisturbed as a result of the open space dedication. The internal road system of the development will remain private. That is one of the things that we had discussed as part of this settlement. So there'll be no maintenance costs to the township with respect to the internal roads for the development. The Toll Brothers will also agree as part of the land development plan, if the township were to approve this settlement agreement, to pay their traffic impact fee as well as do a traffic impact study as part of this project. And that's pretty standard here in the township in terms of requiring that analysis to be done. The overall project would have to be fully engineered and go through your land development review process. So that would then deal with landscaping. That would deal with all your different standards and provisions in terms of design and construction. And that would also subject us to your Township Engineers' review. So if the board sees fit to approve this plan tonight, it's not a full approval of the project. The project needs to come back and go through your land development plan process. So you have a preliminary final. And that would require us to go through all the engineering, including stormwater management as well, which I know is a very important issue to the township. Given that the conditional use process is more of a high-level, pre-engineering type of process, that stormwater management design obviously has not been fully engineered at this point. It would get fully engineered during the land development process. It would have to be approved by the township as well as by Conservation District or D E P, whoever would be reviewing the project. So all of that would have to be done in accordance with the applicable regulations. There's nothing in this settlement that shortchanges that or changes that requirement. They will all be standard and must be met. Oh, in addition, I'm sorry, I did mention that the trails, the trails will also be owned and maintained by the Future Homeowners Association, but they will be open to the public. So again, the township will not be required to maintain the trail system. That will be something that will be privately owned and maintained. So that, again, no impact to the township with respect to having that construction. We also had talked about some buffering along Twining Bridge Road. And the settlement agreement requires that buffering to be enhanced as opposed to what your ordinance would ordinarily require. As part of the settlement agreement, we've included exhibits that have been reviewed by the Township Engineer and Landscape Architects. And we've gone back and forth and come up with a way to stagger the buffering along the perimeter of the property so as to not fully screen, but further mitigate any visual impacts that may occur from the existing roadways along Twining Bridge, as well as, I believe, on Durham as well. We have that buffering set up as well. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that we have moved beyond what your ordinance would ordinarily require and have enhanced that. And that would be an obligation imposed upon Toll Brothers as the developer under the settlement agreement. So that's a general overview of what is being proposed and I believe also what is included in the settlement agreement that's before this board for consideration this evening. We're obviously happy to answer any questions the board may have with respect to what is proposed or what I've presented this evening. But that's a good overview of what's on the table in front of you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman.
Thank you.
I do have some questions, but let's, let's see if we can get a motion on the floor first.
Sure, absolutely.
I would entertain a motion. Let me get to my agenda so I can read exactly what I want to say. To approve the settlement agreement for Toll Brothers, four thirteen and Twining Bridge Road project. Do I have such a motion?
But you just made the motion, right?
I, I read the, read what I wanted the motion to be, so.
So I'll second that.
Okay. And I can make the motion. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clybro. I, I did have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And to a little bit of an extent, there'll be a reiteration just for emphasis, I think. There will be no entrances on, on Twining Bridge.
Other than the emergency access that was proposed.
Now, I did have a question more specifically about that. Is that an easement or is that an actual emergency exit?
Well, it, it has not been fully designed at this point, but it would be an actual, I think, internal roadway to the development. But it's not designed. So sometimes emergency accesses may be pavers that have grass on them. Sometimes they're roadways that are narrow in length but are able to handle the weight of the emergency vehicle. So that would have to be designed.
Okay. And they, and they would, would, they would have a chain?
They would have a chain or whatever the township would require. So that way, it can't be used for access by the residents or anyone else trying to drive through only emergency vehicles.
And there is, there is also the same kind of design on the, on the emergency exit to Durham Road?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Did I see that the buffer area around the property was up to a hundred and fifty feet?
What's our distance?
It's the same as the conditional use.
Yes, it's the same as what the conditional use plans were. So I think that was one fifty, if I look.
I'm pretty sure I saw, one of the, one of the plans I saw, one fifty. Maybe it was that, that buffer plan to your left, up on the, on the pedestal. But I, I'm pretty sure it's a hundred and fifty. And there'll be some, on the elevations that I saw, I also saw some plans for trees to be planted near the trail.
Correct.
And it would provide some additional buffering.
Correct.
With, with the appearance of additional buffering.
Right.
Talked to a number of residents about, and you mentioned it, about stormwater management. And it is a concern on Twining Bridge Road. I know you said that it'd be fully engineered and we'd certainly have everything verified by the engineers and all the calculations. What is, what is the, the outcome for stormwater management? Is it not to increase what's already there?
Correct. So the stormwater management will result in stormwater runoff being controlled and/or reduced to pre-development or better. So that's what your regulations have. In fact, I think it's the two-year, delta two-year. So you'd probably have to buy at the minimum infiltrator remove the increase in the two-year storms. So that should make it better. But there's no ability for this project to get approved without making it stay at least neutral or better in terms of runoff. So, and also this site, by clustering it in the further corner, you're allowing additional runoff to go over naturally as it, as it has always done over the area that's going to be undisturbed. So you can collect, concentrate and get it into the waterways where it currently goes and then let the rest continue to do what it does naturally.
That's another concern that I've, that I've heard from neighbors is they're worried about that, that stream, if it, if it was impacted and you're taking a lot of the impact away with this new, new design.
That, that's correct. In fact, if you look at the proposed plan as it stands right now, we're providing a two point four five acre stormwater management facility in addition to another almost acre stormwater management facility right before you actually even get into the riparian quarter, not the stream itself. Your ordinance also has riparian buffer zones, one and two, that prevent you from doing any type of grading, development or disturbance in those areas. We're adhering to all of them throughout the project and the areas that are located. There's also a small wetland area that's kind of a finger. It's not really connected, but it's close enough. So we've also put in the wetland buffer area as well. So we're maintaining a lot of distance from those natural features so that they won't be impacted. And then we're also reducing that stormwater volume that goes into those areas to prevent erosion from occurring when there's discharge.
And I think I had just one more. There was a, on the preliminary plans or on the settlement plans, there's a retention basin on the corner of Twining Bridge, the southwest corner, I guess.
Yeah, about point six two acres stormwater management facility in that location. That's correct.
I had a resident that lived in that corner, one of the corner lots there that was, was worried about, you know, runoff there, but.
Well, if I could have, we have our engineer from Eastern States, Mr. Bayano here. He could really explain better than I could how that basin will collect stormwater and then discharge. And, and remember, this is theoretical as it hasn't been fully designed. So it is subject to change, but the concepts would be the same.
And we'll meet all the calculations when it's done.
Absolutely. So John, if you could just explain briefly the basin down at the corner where the bend is on Twining Bridge Road, how that would be controlled?
Back in twenty twenty, I'd walked a site on several occasions. And I know there's an issue down in that corner. And back in a twenty twenty plan, we didn't have a basin in that corner. So we were trying to, and this evolved the situation, put something there to help control it a little bit better. Basins in general collect water, hold it for a detain, detention basin name for a longer time and release it slower. So yes, we're increasing the amount of runoff immediately leaving the lots, but the basins in general can control that. And in this case, we've gotten feedback from the public and from, from your staff that there is an issue here. Once we get into the calculations and everything we have to to satisfy ordinances and, and speak with your engineer, the, the intended outcome is to reduce that issue at that corner and find a proper location to discharge. I know there are pipes in that location. We have not studied at this point if they're insufficient yet. And so that would be one thing we'd be looking at also. We don't intend to increase pipe size, but it's always a, a thing we might have to do. But the basin is there to help reduce the flow leaving the site, especially in that corner.
And we'll talk about this much more in land development.
Yes, it'll be, yeah.
I, I lied, I had one more quick question.
Sure.
I forget what it was. I'm sorry. Oh, the ag soils.
Yes.
There's no longer ag soils on the lot that people are going to be not allowed to touch.
That, that's correct. So the, so the lots will be your typical homeowner lot without these conservation easements. So that way, there won't be an enforcement issue. And as I had said earlier, by clustering it all, we're able to take those ag soils that we have to preserve and keep them in the open space, in the undisturbed areas. It'll be just one big, as we showed on the other plan, one big open area that won't be disturbed, developed or touched.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we go out to the trails. I know at one end, it could connect up to a trail that's on the other side of the road, the Twining Bridge Road. As you may know, we have some issues in town with regard to pedestrian safety. So I'm assuming that there'll be more people crossing Twining Bridge Road who might use that trail to get on the other side. Who, I guess it'd be up to us to provide the markings for a crosswalk, for example, or?
I think we're showing it as coming to the Twining Bridge area and we would probably run it across. I don't know if we can actually make the connection yet. I don't know if Justin had looked at that, but that's in the southern portion of the property. There's the association property there where I think the trail comes up to connect. So whatever the township would require in terms of- So whatever the township would require in terms of pavement marking, signage, that's something that we would have to install as part of the trail construction.
I guess it would also apply to the, uh, North Drive, um, where right now people would not be crossing the road over there, but you do have a light and the trail goes over there, plus the other walkways, I imagine.
Correct, as part of the PennDOT Highway occupancy permit, we'd have to do the intersection design, which would include the pedestrian facilities, um, in that location, so absolutely that would be part of the permitting process as well as the construction process.
Okay, are those trails like multi-use trails or just walking trails?
Yes, they're eight-foot wide trails, so they would be multimodal. I assume that would include bicycles, runners, joggers, walkers.
Baby carriages?
Probably, yeah, I mean, eight, eight feet wide's pretty wide, and I believe that's what your township manager had requested some time ago in order to make sure that this was a fully functional trail system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Snyder?
I have a question.
Sure.
You might not be, uh, at this point yet, but is it your intention to use native plants and trees?
Yeah.
In this development?
Yes, it is, and the species obviously would be subject to whatever the township arborist or landscape architect would require, but, um, I think that is what's required under the ordinance is to use native and not to use any non-native.
Mr. Clabro?
I, I, um, like to ask some questions as to how you came to the determination that the entrance should be coincide with North Drive. Now, on the, on the original plan, I remember that you did have a roadway going out to Municipal Drive. And from Municipal Drive, it would have been an intersected, lighted intersection at Municipal and 413. Is that correct?
Well, no, that's not completely correct. The, the process was we started with the two on Twining Bridge under the conditional use.
Well, that was, yeah, that's the original, original.
And then when we were talking about settlement discussions, we analyzed the connection to Municipal Drive that would have come out at Municipal Drive, uh, I forget the name of the Delancey Court, uh, Main Road and 413. That intersection wouldn't, uh, have enough warrants under PennDOT's analysis for a signal. Toll agreed to put a signal in if the warrants were there, but when we did the analysis, there wasn't enough to justify putting a signal at that location. So that was something that I analyzed, and then after that, we came back to North Drive because that's where the existing signal is located.
Gotcha. I mean, even to go further back originally, um, under that original plan, which was a, I want to say 150 homes, uh, different combination, well.
Yeah, yeah, with the, with the.
I'm just trying to build up something here.
Sure, sure.
Toll Brothers was willing to, um, construct almost a two-mile roadway going out to the Wright's Road intersection, which would have been a roadway just to this development.
That's correct, and that would have been for a project that would have included, I think, close to 300 homes, if I remember correctly.
Well, 300 wouldn't have happened, but.
Right, I understand. But, but, but the justification for the cost of the road obviously would have been mitigated by the additional units. I don't think it was ever proposed.
I just, I just want to build up, build up something up here as to the different, different options that were out there.
For access, absolutely, go ahead.
First one was two on Twining Bridge.
Correct.
That wasn't, that wasn't, uh, received well by the neighbors of Twining Bridge.
That is correct.
Then came, I believe, the two-mile roadway going out to Wright's.
That was an option, that's correct.
That wasn't received well by some people that came to the work session and voiced some complaints.
Correct, because they didn't like the density that came with it.
Gotcha. The density which would only affected that neighborhood because it didn't intersect with any other.
That's correct, it didn't go.
Any other neighborhood or, or development.
That's right, didn't go anywhere else.
Okay. Now, the third would have been the roadway coming out to Municipal Drive.
Correct.
But you couldn't get the warrants for the light, and plus there were a lot of complaints from Delancey Court, and that pretty much nixed that one.
That is correct.
Now, North Drive, from, from, if I remember correctly, that was always slated to be an intersection. I'm, I'm going back years ago, because is, is there, um, electrical hookups on that side of the street to put a signalized light there?
I, I do not know, I believe there may be electric running perpendicular in the roadway, I don't know where it terminates.
Okay, so that's how that, that came to that determination, plus that's what PennDOT recommends as far as an intersection and, and a, entrance and exit from that development.
And that is correct, when we did the signal warrant analysis at Delancey Court, 413 and Municipal Drive, PennDOT reviewed and recommended that any access from this property come out at North Drive.
Okay, and we're at a max of 45 homes, correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay, and all those 45 homes would naturally have to come out that exit way, which will be across from North Drive?
Correct.
Okay. Now, um, I, I've seen some emails from some, some residents that kind of made the statement that 45 homes was highly dense, and it, it's, it's just weird that it came from people that lived in Newtown Grant, probably the most highly dense, uh, community in Bucks County. And the person that sent this, that particular street that that person lived on, I drove up and down that street. That street had well over triple the amount of homes on that one street. So my question would be, should we exclude that street from Newtown Township because it has more than 45 homes?
No.
I, I mean, um, I, I just found that to be a ridiculous, uh, argument. Also the fact that, uh, I don't know, I've lived in Newtown Grant for 35 years. My section alone has 376 homes. Across the street and the other development, 177 homes. I've never had a traffic impact happen at that light. So when, when I ever hear about traffic and traffic impact, I just have to laugh because I, I've never seen it happen in what I'll call, I'll, I'll, I'll quote a gentleman that comes up here all the time, the biggest and the best, I've, I've never seen any kind of problem. So when people talk about 45 homes are going to affect the density of the township and the traffic impact of the township, i- i- it's kind of, it's kind of ridiculous, especially since all of us here on this board live in developments that were once farmland or once something that was owned by a private person, but I guess now that we're here, we don't want anything else. How much, if, if you can, what would the cost of these homes be? Just ballpark figure.
They'll, they'll be, they'll be very high, given the area and.
Say, starting at 700, 700,000 and above?
They'll, they'll be very.
Okay.
They'll be very high.
Now, i- i- if, if, um, if my memory serves me correct, there's something called a real estate transfer tax.
That's correct.
And it's 1% in Bucks County, correct? Now of that 1%, the township will get half a, half a percent of that, that cost. So if it's a, a million-dollar home, we're going to get, uh, a thousand bucks.
10,000. You're asking a lawyer to do math.
My math is not that good.
It's more than that.
Without a calculator, I can't.
Yeah, I got it. So $10,000.
Okay. Okay, dividing half, that's four, $5,000 times 45.
That's just on the sale.
Which is a nice chunk.
Right.
Then I'm going to assume, um, and, and believe me, I don't have to build up your case for you, I'm sure you have. But then I'm going to assume that people living in these homes are going to be six-figure
Yes.
income earners.
They would have to be.
Of which, again, the township gets earned income tax from these people.
Correct.
Which would be a half a percent on the 1%, the other half goes to our illustrious school system. Now, we're always up here at budget time trying to figure out, uh, how, how come we're short on money, but this would, this would pretty much put a nice, uh, nice chunk in our pockets as far as income, and now the earned income tax, as opposed to the transfer tax, is every year. And as these people get increases in pay, hopefully, it'll increase the earned income tax.
Right.
So, I, I think, looking at the big picture, we're not just looking at 45 homes and, you know, supposed density and supposed traffic impact, we're looking at a financial gain to the township. And either we get a financial gain or this board raises taxes every year. So, I, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know what the determination of this board would be, but let me ask you a question. If it was denied tonight, what would, what would you do?
We'd wind up litigating what is currently pending in the common pleas court, and that would come back with the same number of homes, but a much more expansive disturbance area, less open space, less preserved ag soils, no trail, um, you know, it'd go down all the list of all the differences that I talked about, more woodland disturbance, um, all the conservation management purposes that the settlement plan achieves better than the conditional use plan would, would be lost.
Okay, and where would the access to the development be?
They'd be both on Twining Bridge Road, as was originally proposed.
So, what this board tried so hard to alleviate, if this board were to deny this tonight, it would go back to Twining Bridge Road?
That's correct.
Okay.
And there are a couple of things I want to add to bolster to what you just said. With respect to the traffic impact, we had submitted a traffic impact study with the conditional use application, given that the density is the same, the trip generations remain the same. And what that traffic impact study said was based upon the ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers Land Use Code for Single Family Homes, was that in the weekday morning peak hour, all you would have was 37 trips, nine in and 28 out, and on the weekday afternoon peak hour, all you would have is 47 trips, 30 in and 17 out. It's such a very, very small amount of traffic compared to what ordinarily travels on 413 and comes out of the surrounding development, so it bolsters what you say. There's little or no traffic impact coming out of 45 single-family homes during the peak hours. The other thing I wanted to add that supports what you were saying, Mr. Clabro, was that the fiscal impact studies that we normally do also take into account the fiscal impacts to the township of maintaining communities like this. It takes the street, the trails, all of those upkeep costs, okay? None of which the township will be bearing here because the roads are going to be private and the trail system's going to be private. So while you have those other tax revenue benefits, you don't have all of the negatives that ordinarily impact the township. So again, it, it is a net positive to the township from a fiscal impact analysis.
I guess one, one more thing, I'm sorry, I, I just thought of it, is you said 99 acres,
That's correct.
which would be dedicated to the township. Now, can we, can, again, I'm just going to assume that maybe an acre of land in Newtown Township goes for $100,000?
Or more.
Okay, so we're talking about $10 million worth of land.
Right, and the land where it's situated, given that you have this existing municipal complex right here, makes it a logical extension if you ever wanted to supply additional rec facilities instead of creating a whole nother infrastructure somewhere else in the township.
Okay, so unless the board comes up with $10 million, we would never be able to buy 99 acres?
That's correct.
Of land.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clabro. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody here would agree we don't want any more building anywhere. We don't really have that option when it comes to the rights of the property owners. This does do a few things, I think we had a problem with the original plans, uh, access to Twining Road, uh, but we, we had the discussions about how much traffic at either end of that road is a nightmare currently during rush hour, um, and it affects all the people living on that road. This, this fixes that problem. I also didn't like the exit through Municipal, uh, to another uncontrolled intersection, so it takes care of that. And it does give the township a lot of space that we can preserve and have nothing built on if we so choose, which I like. Uh, I don't, we don't have a, a legal leg to stand on to deny it, and I think this is a good compromise and, uh, it, it, it ticks all the boxes of the problems that I had with the previous plans, so, um, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm in favor of this, this version of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. At this point, uh, we'd like to open it up to the public if you would like to make a comment on, on this, uh, motion. You can feel free to come up, uh, please state your name and what development you're from, and, um, I know we got the biggest and the best. And.
Johnny April, Newtown Grant, thanks for the plug, Phil. Right now, I'm up here as a member of the Board of Directors of Newtown Grant, Home Owners Association. We don't want through traffic. For the township, this is a great plan, a lot less houses than it was, uh, most people on the board didn't complain about, uh, the amount of houses going there, but they do complain about traffic going through Newtown Grant. There's enough of it already. How many times have people just blow through the stop signs? You know, uh, Chief Hearn had details out there, uh, Chief Paschalini had details out there, still happens quite often. No through traffic, whether you have to do pork chops, right, right in, right out, left, left and right, you could do it, no through traffic. You know, like Phil had mentioned, we're almost a third of the population in Newtown, we were at one time, but there's more developments since then. But, um, you know, uh, they're, um, you know, anticipating, uh, uh, traffic and stuff like that, it's not two or three houses there, it's 45, and it's anything like most of the houses in Newtown Grant. There's three or four drivers in, in each house. My cluster alone in Newtown Grant is, uh, mostly above 65. You know, I'm over 70. Your reflexes slow down, everything slows down. You know that, Johnny, yeah? You know, you Dennis, all I heard from you, especially tonight, was Twining Bridge Road, Twining Bridge Road. Why not let them build their, fix that road so more of the township could use it? But no, you're only concerned about your development. Johnny lives on the other side of township, he's more in line with the borough. You know, no through traffic, that's what Newtown Grant's looking for. Now, if you don't agree with that, I'd like to say something else, clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBro. Next, please.
Joseph McAteer, 88 Twining Bridge Road. It's a very tough act to follow. I did want to say, I think, you know, we've been going through this, looking at many revisions since, uh, 2018. I think when I first received, uh, the letter from Toll Brothers, um, I think we've, like, continued to improve the overall plans, and I think everybody's done a lot of work to kind of get where we are now, and I think, obviously, I would prefer it to be a farm, I'm right next to it, um, but I think the overall plan, if, you know, is going to be developed, um, is, like Kyle said, is a good compromise, and I think, uh, like, I think it, you know, it, it kind of fits. So I don't have too much to comment, uh, about, like, the current plan, except, you know, I'm not, like, extremely opposed to it, and I think that everyone did, like, a lot of hard work to kind of grind out the best solution, you know, for everybody, um, within the community and also Newtown in general. I did want to say a couple of things, like in terms of the overall open space, um, I hope we can think about keeping it as a farm, I, you know, I think it, like, definitely adds a lot to the character, um, and we have a lot of, uh, parks, um, you know, as it is, and, and they cost, you know, cost a lot of money to maintain, so it is nice to have a farm, you know, you can lease it, et cetera. I don't know what you guys are going to do with the house that's there, um, it's a question, I think, that probably will come up during development, I don't know, um, but right now it is in pretty derelict condition, uh, so it's just something to consider. I did also want to address, like, Phil's overall comments, um, whereas I, I, like, definitely don't want to raise taxes, I think it is a, the, the overall process for, like, looking at how, um, you know, new development actually impacts taxes, like in the short term, you know, because you're, you are going to collect on a transfer tax, et cetera, maybe maybe developer tax. You also, you have to, you know, to model it is not like purely that simple. You know, likely people that are moving to this neighborhood are going to have kids. Those kids are going to go to school. We have to make sure that we provide, you know, a spot for that, you know, child. And school is like obviously the most expensive part of our budget. So I, I just want people to think about that. Like, I think, you know, in terms of our overall budget, it is, is complex and there are many different parts to kind of consider. So I just wanted to address that because I think it sounds good. It just, it's just not quite that clear cut. And I just want to address it. But otherwise, you know, thank you, guys. I appreciate your help. Especially thank you, John. You know, I think your communication's been excellent throughout this process and just keeping people up to date. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McAteer.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bradley Cooper. I live in Newtown Grant. And I've lived here since 1999 when I moved from California. And when I moved here, one of the beautiful things about this area was the open land, a lot of greenery, a lot of, you know, nice things to look at, trees and plants. It wasn't like Philadelphia where every single corner you got like a tree and then a sidewalk and 50 million buildings all connected to each other. So that was one of the good things about Newtown. Living in Newtown and moving to Newtown Grant, having all the greenery. The other thing I like about it, which you don't really see much in the, you know, in Bucks County is you have farms. And these farms provide a lot of food for the community, for Bucks County. We got farms, not just in Newtown, but all over Bucks County. And it seems like those farms are starting to dwindle and go smaller and smaller. Well, we're stuck having to buy things that come from China or buy things that come from Mexico. Well, we could be getting so much good stuff from our local farmers, but because of developers or because of builders who want to build all these different homes or office buildings, they just take away the farms without thinking about what the impact could be financially to these farmers. How they've been supplying us with so many food and so much great stuff over the course of the last two years with the pandemic, where we've been having supply issues. And we got a farm right in front of Newtown Grant that's going to be, you know, demolish most of it, if not all of it, in, in a short period of time. And when you give developers or people an inch, it seems like they take a mile and they just want to go and destroy anything and everything they can because all they care about is making a dollar, making a buck. They don't care about how it affects the community because most of these people don't live in Newtown or Newtown Grant. They don't have to deal with all of the problems or issues that arise that maybe not at first we have to deal with, but overall in the long term. I went to Council Rock North. I remember when Council Rock North was the only high school. We had to build Council Rock South because we kept on building and building and building. And there was not enough room for us to be able to house all of the students that went to Council Rock North. So we had to have Council Rock South. When I was growing up, one of the things that I heard my mom talk about when we were living in Newtown Grant and my sister got her license 16, 17, is that a lot of people thought that on North Drive by the farm, that we need a traffic light there because it's a little too difficult and too dangerous for high school students or young kids that are learning to drive to try to get out to make a right or a left. Not because there's a lot of traffic, not because it's swamp like 413, but because when you've got cars going back and forth, you have to stop and you have to wait to make a left turn or a right turn. So they decided to get a, you know, a stop sign or a red light there to help the flow of traffic off of North Drive for the, for the younger kids like my, like myself. When I first started to drive, helped me to make a left or a right turn. Now on, now on Twining Bridge Road, one of the issues that I see with having any type of building or structure there is that there's so many deer that are on that road. When you start putting more and more houses there, more deer have nowhere to go but in the middle of the road. I have literally hit three deers on that road, not because I was speeding, not because I was going too fast, because I know that that area is so open and wooded and there's animals everywhere that go from Tyler State Park, you know, walk on Swamp Road into all the grassland over there. But because they dart out and they don't see you and they don't care. It could be a baby because the mom's on the other side. And I smash into it. And I had to buy so many car parts for my car to fix it because I hit a deer. And a lot of that stuff is not worth going through insurance because my car's not worth anything, because I can't afford any fancy schmancy car. So I don't like that we're putting homes right next to where deer or animals play. I don't like that we're not considering all these different things that could be affecting the community and all these different things that, you know, could be affecting just normal everyday driving, not even talking about extra traffic or extra, you know, people, you know, going to be living here or living there, how many homes are going to be there with how many cars. And then the last thing, not to put you guys down, but it seems like some of this has to do with finances, has to do with money, has to do with how can I make an extra buck so I don't have to raise the taxes? Why can't we figure out a way, working with the township, working with you guys, working with the police and fire department and looking through the books and see how can we save some money? How can we budget better? How can we do this or that a little bit different so we don't have to raise taxes? Why is it always, let's try to do what we want to do and then find a scapegoat from what I hear from you guys to try to figure out how I can continue to spend what I want to spend, but then get a couple bucks from here or there? I just think that we need to, you know, step back a little bit, think about what we are going to do, the impact of everything and not just financially, not just, you know, to not have to go to court or do this and think about how it affects animals, plants, farmers, people, driving, traffic, everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. A lot. You said a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board here. So I'm actually here for a different issue tonight. So Andrew Neville out of Newtown Crossing Eagle Ridge area. But...
This is, this is not public?
No, it's not. Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about that. I just want to say, like, according to this issue though, just being in the Newtown Township area, I should still be able to speak to it.
Sure. Are you, are you speaking about this, this?
I am, yes.
Okay. Okay, I thought you were saying you came for another issue.
Oh, no, I was just not. Letting the board know, yeah. So, yeah, apologize for the confusion there. So, yeah, just in listening here this evening, just a few things that came to point because they can always affect other issues that come across the board is, you know, one of the biggest things, especially with the new development for Toll Bridge, you know, could be good for the community, maybe it's not. A big thing was, it actually really stuck out to me as soon as it was mentioned that they would take it to the common pleas court if they didn't approve anything tonight. There was nothing brought to the attention of, you know, I'm sure everyone has looked into what that court case might look like, how it may turn out. But it immediately was brought up, sir, that, oh, okay, well, if that's the case you're going to take, then we might as well, we should do this then because it's a better option for us. Which that I don't exactly agree with because there is always, can be a winning...
I hate to interrupt you, but I didn't make any mention to a court case or what we would do in a court case.
I know, the, the gentleman you're speaking to.
Yes, yes. So, so my determination is not based on a court case. So I think you're misrepresenting me right now.
Well, no, I apologize if that's the way it was taken. In my sense, it was, to me, it felt more of like leading the witness or leading the salesman as to what he should be saying in terms of what he should be representing. You know, if we don't do this tonight, what will you do? And, oh, like, if we do approve this tonight, how much acreage will we have? And so you actually, the board, I feel, took the approach of the salesman instead of the salesman, which that should have been part of, you know, the presentation itself. And also it immediately, as the gentleman before me stated, it did come back to a lot of, oh, like, we don't know how we're so behind on taxes. This could be a big influx. When we weren't even told and out of the three or four people sitting here now from Toll Brothers couldn't even say how much the homes would be worth. So we don't even know how much tax money would actually come in. And so I'm as directed at the board, sir, it's nothing directed at you. So it was just something I would like to say. So I appreciate the board's time.
Thank you.
Greg Zornoda from Newtown Grant. And this is going to surprise somebody, but I agree with John. As far as the traffic light at North Drive and where this new development comes out, we're going to have traffic engineers look at all that, correct? This does not say we're going to have everything on this plan. It's going to be so. It's got to go back to planning. It's going to have to go to traffic. It's going to have a lot of things that have to take place before they start putting shovels in the ground, correct? All right. The other thing is, forget about the money. 108 acres for free for the township? We can, we can rent it to farmers. We could do, we could do lots of things with it. But it's 108 acres that is free to the township. Forget about the money. That's land that won't be built on so long as the township preserves it. And I think that's a great thing. So I hope you vote for this conditional use. I'm not a Toll Brothers fan, I'm not a hero of theirs, but this makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zornoda. Any others? Going once, going twice? I'll call the question. All those in favor of the, of accepting the settlement agreement for Toll Brothers 413 and Twining Bridge Road, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your continued cooperation and comments. It was very helpful in the process.
We'll continue.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
We'll give the presenters a minute to pack up. And thank all those in attendance. Let's give it five, five minutes.
After the warmest day of the year with many areas hitting 70 degrees, cold air slams back in overnight under partly cloudy skies. We'll drop back into the 20s in the suburbs, 32 by Thursday morning in Center City. And it's a cloudy and cold day Thursday highs only in the 30s. And that mix of sleet, ice and rain starts to push in as we go deeper into Thursday evening. I'm your analyst, Adam Joseph, with your 6 ABC forecast.
This report is sponsored by Macy's.
We'll call us back to order. Thanks, everyone, for sticking around. We're going to go right to our next round, our first round of public comment. Before we, before we have people come up, I just wanted to ask everyone to remember to refrain from personal attacks, from name-calling. We would just ask everyone to keep in mind that we're all neighbors and hopefully neighborly to each other. And I hope I don't have to interrupt anybody tonight. So that being said, please come to the microphone and state your name and where you're from. And we'll be glad to hear what you have to say. Mr. Ancona.
Hello, folks. Thank you. I'm Peter Ancona, Vice President, Newtown Crossing Community Association. And I live in Newtown Crossing. I came tonight because since I was last, at, at the last meeting that I attended and spoke with all of you, I did get some feedback regarding the issue that I discussed, which was around the access options to the Arcadia at Newtown development that's being built currently underway, ground clearing is currently underway at the corner of Buck Road and the Newtown bypass. And the reason I wanted to come tonight was because I received some feedback from some of the folks that I've been trying to work with in our work with the state senator and state representative, Santa Zaro and Warren, to try to get some support with another look at one of the two access options for the development. And the feedback I received was that of the two options that are really only worth considering at this point, the one that PennDOT has approved, which is option four, which is a U-turn at the intersection of Buck Road, Diamond Drive and Millpon Road. And option 2C, that's to Charlie, which was a revised signalization at the bypass and the new access road to the development to provide safe entrance and egress at that location. And the feedback that I received was that I, I probably haven't been clear in trying to articulate what the safety benefits are of option 2C over option four, which is the U-turn option versus the, the improved signalization. So that was, that was good feedback. I didn't realize that that was the case. Subsequent to that discussion, I took time basically to put together a side-by-side comparison. A copy of that is here. I sent copies earlier this week to the board for you to take a look at. And I've, you know, gotten some feedback from a few folks, which I appreciate. But I wanted to take a, a few minutes tonight just to publicly try to clarify for anyone who was at the last meeting and for the public who's, who's been paying attention to this, not just Newtown Crossing or Eagle Ridge or Crown Point or Liberty Square, but I know some of the other homeowners associations and all have made some comments about that previously. So I wanted to take a minute just to go over the four basic maneuvers that you would make in order to enter or exit the development. And, you know, a quick rundown on what the, the, is required and what the, the, each of those options does in terms of safe entrance or exit. After I did that, if, if there's no questions, I also wanted to take a minute just to provide an update on where things stand in terms of the, the work that we're doing with the state representatives and trying to get another look from the township or the, from PennDOT. So in front of you and for the folks in the audience that may or may not be able to... Subsequent to that discussion, I took time basically to put together a side-by-side comparison. A copy of that is here. I sent copies earlier this week to the board for you to take a look at, and I've, you know, gotten some feedback from a few folks, which I appreciate. But I wanted to take a, a few minutes tonight just to publicly try to clarify for anyone who was at the last meeting and for the public who's, who's been paying attention to this, not just Newtown Crossing, or Eagle Ridge, or Crown Point, or Liberty Square, but I know some of the other homeowners associations and all have made some comments about that previously. So, I wanted to take a minute just to go over the four basic maneuvers that you would make in order to enter or exit the development. And, you know, a quick rundown on what the, the, is required and what the, the, each of those options does in terms of safe entrance or exit. After I did that, if, if there's no questions, I also wanted to take a minute just to provide an update on where things stand in terms of the, the work that we're doing with the state representatives and trying to get another look from the town, or the, from PennDOT. So, in front of you and for the folks in the audience that may or may not be able to see it, I guess depending on whether the camera person can zoom in on that. Basically, if you're trying to get into this development, there's, there's four, or leave the development, there's basically four, four ways you would do that. Either from northbound Buck Road, from southbound Buck Road, and the bypass east or west. And you're either entering or you're trying to exit. So, the four, the four maneuvers here in comparison, if you're trying to make a left turn into Arcadia from northbound Buck Road, option two C, which is the improved signalization at Buck Road and the bypass, would provide signalized, protected left turn at the intersection signal to enter the development. And that's basically making a left turn across the two southbound lanes of the Buck Road intersection. For option four, which is a U-turn option, it's an unprotected left turn across two southbound Buck Road lanes of traffic from Newtown Bypass and South Sycamore Street. So, I think option two C clearly provides a safer turn by providing protected left turn only access if you, if you want to wait for that. If you don't want to wait for it and the, you know, there's gaps in traffic at the lower traffic times of the day, you can turn right in there. Making a right turn into Arcadia from southbound Sycamore Street and eastbound or westbound Newtown Bypass. Option two C, which is the improved signalization, you could make a right turn in from the right-hand southbound lane of, of Buck Road. And for option four, which is a U-turn option, you can make a right turn in from the right-hand southbound lane. So, there's really no difference between the two. The next one is a left turn out of Arcadia, the church which is there, as well as two single-family residences that have been there since lord knows when. I've lived here thirty-six years, they were here long before Newtown Crossing was built. If you want to do that, option two C, you're gonna have a traffic signal there. So, you have signalized, protected, left turn out of the development across the two southbound lanes and across the four northbound lanes, the two left turn lanes, the one straight-ahead lane up on the Sycamore Street, and what will eventually be two right-hand turn lanes in order to make a right turn or to go north. So, you won't have to worry about being T-boned by somebody, trying to squeeze out of there if you're making an illegal turn. Basically, you would be able to do that in a protected way. For the option four, which is a U-turn option, there will be no left turnout permitted, period. That's unsignalized right turn required out of the development, across the two southbound lanes of Buck Road to get to the third southbound lane, a left turn lane, to make a U-turn at the, at the development Newtown Crossing and Crown Point Development entrances at Mill Pond and Diamond Drive. There will be no legal U-turn allowed for anything other than automobiles and SUVs in, in that scenario. Option four, the approved option. So, what will be required is either trucks and other large vehicles that would be coming out of Arcadia, making deliveries, picking up children, schoolchildren, picking up trash, that kind of thing. Will have to continue southbound on Buck Road until they get to the Village Shires area, either Holland Road or Stony Ford Road. As far as if they do choose to make a turn, which is, I think, what everyone on the board in, over the last four years that I've been involved with this, every time this has come up and this has been proposed as an option, and everyone else in our developments are expecting, including Crown Point, is that people are going to make a right turn anyway and either make a U-turn illegally around the island that's there, or they're gonna cut through the development, or they're gonna cut through some of the streets in order to make a U-turn. Recognize that's illegal, but I think it's most probable. So, I think of all the, you know, maneuvers, it's the, one that is the most important from a safety perspective that I think this really highlights. That's the maneuver that probably of the sixty homes that are gonna be in there, that ninety percent of the people are gonna want to make ninety percent of the time, because everybody's going up to Newtown or getting to the bypass or doing something going in that direction as opposed to heading south on Buck Road. That's, that's the low-probability maneuver. Which means that all the trucks, all the vehicles and everything else are either going to try to make an illegal left turn across all that traffic, or those traffic lanes, which is what happens now for people exiting there. Or if they observe the no-left turn, they're gonna go down and try to make the U-turn or cut through the developments. And that's really, I think, the biggest, you know, safety issue that, that is presented by this. The last one is the right turn out of Arcadia property on the southbound Buck Road. It's gonna be signalized and protected right turn, which will be a big plus during high-traffic times, because right now, anybody that travels there during high-traffic times knows that because of the way the lights are timed to efficiently move traffic through there, there's very little gaps in traffic when there's signal changes. So, cars are gonna just have to make a right-hand turn out of there, squeeze in if they use the option four, which is what PennDOT has currently approved, as opposed to a signalized, protected turn with a, you know, a sensor pad there that would turn, turn the light to allow a safe turnout if people want to wait for that light to happen. So, I think, hopefully, this provides more clarification as to why there are really significant differences. I, I know from, you know, talking to a lot of you individually, there's been universal, from what I've heard you say over the years and what I've talked to you about individually, concerns about the safety of the U-turn option. But that's what PennDOT went with. That's why last time I was here, you know, two C, the one I just reviewed. I think, hopefully, you know, you would agree that having reviewed that and, and heard my pitch one more time here, that there's significant benefits to that. The question, and it's not, I know it's not in your hands, is really for PennDOT to reconsider. That's why we've enlisted the support of Representative Warren and Senator Santosaro. I have had, and this kind of rolls into the follow-up update for you as to where things stand since I last talked to you. Originally, last time I was here, we had been to both offices, and they were gonna get back to us. That's where they asked what support we had from the township in terms of their concerns about option four. And where I requested, you know, some sort of individual or collective response on, on how you feel about option four. Since then, I did have a call, I went back to both their offices and, and dropped this off, as well as a letter from our Board of Directors yesterday. And yesterday evening, I got a call from Senator, Representative Warren, had a very lengthy conversation with him. He's very supportive, he's asked the Transportation Committee at the state level to work with PennDOT to take another look at this. He still would really appreciate anything, and I, I know I've heard back and I appreciate it from several of you already, that you're going to, you know, put something together for me that sort of states your individual feelings about this. Hopefully, I know how you feel about four, but if, if this hopefully gives you a better idea of what the benefits are of two C over four, that would really be appreciated. I think it'll only help. And I have also reached out to Fran Hanny from PennDOT and requested, you know, let him know that, that the representatives are going to be asking for another review of this. And I didn't want to blindside him with it. He was a very, you know, good one. We had the discussion with him earlier, just wasn't budging on it. But hopefully, I did provide him a copy of this and asked him for, you know, further consideration as a best overall balanced decision for the benefit of all the community, the driving public, the people that live in the community, and the people who are going to live in the new community, who are gonna have to deal with this every day and deal with the safety issues. So, I'm hoping that logic and, you know, a best-balanced overall win-win solution can be achieved and we can go with option two C. And I will continue to keep you updated, and I thank you again for your support so far and ask you for your continued support in the form of, if you're so moved, to provide a, you know, an email or something back to me that would be helpful with the, with the state. And that's the end of my comments unless you have any questions or comments for me. Thank you.
Does anybody have a question or comment for Mr. Ancona?
Yes, I do.
I know it's kind of out of ordinary to do it, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I think we got confused over what you were asking us to do. Obviously, I think you're asking us our opinion on option two C. Everybody knows our opinion on the U-turn. And we even had our Planning Commission review the highway occupancy permit that Arcadia has with PennDOT for the U-turn. Did, do we know if that permit was granted, or what's the status of that permit?
Mr. Lewis, do we know, or?
It's still under review with PennDOT.
Thank you.
It's still under review? Okay. With regard to two C, I'm a little confused. It sounds like there's gonna be two traffic lights very close to each other on, isn't there a traffic light already on the bypass? And then you want another signal a few hundred yards beyond that into Buck Road?
No, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but when you're, you're done, I would like to clarify that. I think that's a great question. You know, I don't have any pictures. I know we had the pictures when we were doing all the reviews with PennDOT.
It just seemed to me a, a little complicated, and I tried to remember what PennDOT criticisms were, something to do with queuing up and that kind of thing. They had the same criticism of the other option going out directly to the bypass. So, they did have legitimate concerns about that.
Yeah, and so, just to provide clarity, the first question is, it's not an additional, a whole additional traffic signal. What it does is, and this was based on the recommendation of the engineer that did the, the revised alternatives and presented it to, to PennDOT, is to realign the exit so that it's closer to the intersection, move the existing traffic light that the northbound Buck Road motorists already have, move that down the road as, as far as necessary, you know, a couple hundred feet or whatever, in order to allow a box, you know, like you would see at any intersection for the people coming out of Arcadia, and adding a signal for the people coming out of Arcadia that would be integrated with the overall intersection signal and essentially create a five, five-points intersection like you would see over at New Falls and Oxford Valley Road at five points in Levittown, or the one over on 611 in Horsham. It's a, it's a standard that they already have as PennDOT. They don't like it, but, you know, that ship sailed a long time ago, long before any of us were around, when the, that little piece of property was sort of sandwiched in there without good access and the decisions were made that were made. And that's why I think it's not, you know, it's not what PennDOT would prefer, which was the, you know, the road through the woods to Mill Pond. It's not what we would prefer, you know, in terms of the U-turn, but I think it's a, it's safer. To address your second point, the traffic engineer that did the modeling of the intersection is looking at traffic flow, and it's correct that two C does not model as well in terms of improving traffic flow as four does, because you're basically, when, when there's somebody at that light at the times of day, when there is somebody at that light trying to get out of Arcadia to make a left turn, that light's gonna change when there's somebody sitting there waiting to turn. It's not gonna turn if there's nobody there. But it will, at those times, create a one additional signal for the period of time that somebody's going through there and it turns yellow and, and red. So, and, and I totally acknowledge that that's, that's a part of it. Both those options improve over the current situation, though, because of the addition of the second right-hand turn lane on northbound Buck Road. So, it's not as good as four, but it's better than what we have today. And I, I think the last point I would make is that that's a traffic flow issue, which is definitely a significant issue. I'm not diminishing that at all. But I think the piece that we kind of left out of that discussion is the safety aspect of this. And there's clearly no comparison in terms of, for the people that are gonna live in that development and for the people who are gonna be traveling through that intersection, that, and based on track record of people trying to make illegal turns, that this is going to be way safer and over the long haul, it's gonna be better for all of us as a community, for the traveling public, for the, the residents here, and for the leadership in the township that has to deal with issues when they come up, you know, with the traffic issues and safety issues. And again, I know this is a state highway, but you still, you guys still have to deal with it when this, this stuff comes up and hear the complaints and the concerns, as you, as you have recently with everything that's going on over in the shopping center and everything that's going on over on North Sycamore Street, where we had the, you know, several incidents and a fatality. So, again, I, I appreciate you, you know, your support so far and ask for, you know, your continued support if you, you know, if you agree based on this that this is a better alternative, I'd ask for you to, you know, indicate that just as a, an additional shot in the arm with hopefully persuading PennDOT. And I totally acknowledge it's a long shot with PennDOT, but it's that important to, to all of us, I think. You know, you said we're all neighbors, I, I agree we all are, we all, probably most of us travel through that intersection at various times. None of us wants to see somebody get hurt, and we're all interested in quality of life for, for our existing and future residents. Thank you for your time. And anything else?
I do have one, one or two things I just wanted to add, and again, it's, it's out of the ordinary, it's out of the ordinary that we have a give and take, but I, I, I just wouldn't want to give you false hope. Now, I could give you a letter that says whatever exactly you want me to say, but I, I just wonder what PennDOT would, would do. I mean, they've denied it a couple of times already.
Yeah, it's...
Back and forth and...
I think it's a long shot. You know, when we're on the call, and I forget whether, whether you were on there, Dennis, I know John was when we had the call with PennDOT in September. I asked a question at one point to Fran Hanny, is this a hell no? And he said, I would never say it's a hell no, but, but, you know, it's, it, it's not our preference. And, you know, and then subsequently, of course, they came out with their, you know, basically saying that they were still gonna stick with option four. But I, you know, I think he's an engineer, he's a reasonable person. I mean, I think there's a compelling argument here, whether it moves him or not, I don't know, but any, anything, it's, we're not gonna know unless we at least try to push it one more time. And, and again, I wouldn't ask you to say anything that you don't feel, so it's, if you feel based on this that option two C is a, you know, better overall option, I would ask you to, you know, to just say it. And, and, you know, it's, you're, you're one person on a Board of Supervisors and a township of twenty thousand people. And, you know, hopefully, any additional things between this, the discussion we have with them, with the input from the Transportation Committee, you know, that'll be enough to move Mr. Hanny in our favor.
And I'm very, I'm also personally very sensitive to any, any risk of violating this, the settlement agreement.
Understood, and I, I'm not a lawyer, and I know, you know, Mr. Sanders is. I've, I've been told from several individuals... I've, I've been told from several individuals that what I'm asking is not, I'm not asking for, to do anything that would jeopardize that. I don't think we're, we're not willing to stick by the, the results of Pendott's decision and I wouldn't ask for that. I'm just asking them to reconsider where they currently stand on it. They ultimately have the final say on that. But, you know, Mr. Sander, you know, would potentially have a better, a much better legal opinion on that than certainly I would.
So you, you would be consent, content if each of us, if we felt the need to, to express our, our preferences?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable if there's concern that as a, as a, you know, as a chairperson of a board and speaking on behalf of the entire board on an issue that, that, that there's some legal issue with that, you know, I certainly respect that and would say that, you know, if you're speaking as individuals about your, you know, your sentiments relative to it, that's really all, you know. The first one would be great, but if that's, if that's not possible and there's not consensus upon, you know, among the board on that, I'm on the board, you know, officer on the board for my development and, you know, there, there's times when we all agree on something and there's times that we don't. So I certainly appreciate that, but, you know, I'm just asking, you know, for your indulgence to consider doing that and appreciate anything you could do as a neighbor and in support of safety for all the traveling public and the neighbors there to, to, to give that some thought and please, if you would, you know, provide that to me as soon as you can because I think if we are going to get an audience with, with Mr. Haney again, I'm probably going to, since Mr. Warren, Representative Warren's already reached out, I'm guessing we're going to hear something pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on, on this. I did communicate via email with Mr. Ancona.
Anybody stay up here?
It's up to you. I already spoke to Mr. Ancona and told him I supported his idea personally and I couldn't speak for the board. Is that, is that something we can do as a board? Just send a letter to representative, or representative senator and Mr. Tanny?
Well, I, I have cautioned against that based on the settlement agreement.
Okay, that's what my question was. All right, thank you.
John D. April, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. You guys are trying to make it the worst, but it would still be the biggest. It's funny, you know, in, in your speech, Mr. Chairman, when you're talking about, you know, public comment and you're saying be kind, we're all neighbors, but it's funny how certain people up on the board, they only pick up for their own neighborhood, not of all Newtown Grant, only their own neighborhood. And that's a shame, that's a shame you're like that. You were voted in by all the township, you know, I don't know why, but you were, and you already now have more than a third of the township that you, you know, disenfranchised. Newtown Grant, all developments around Arcadia, and, you know, you didn't listen to them. I mean, you could say all you want, oh, oh, it was a mistake. Well, the mistake is still there, isn't it? Also, since they're turning dirt on Arcadia now, you never could get consensus of, of the, the people involved to get the entrance and exit on the bypass. Arcadia had said, whether they lied or lied again or whatever, said that the synagogue wouldn't go in with them. But maybe now since they're turning dirt, the synagogue, the development and the church, and you guys could get together, four-pronged fork, and go to Pendott and tell them, hey, look, we got these three things over here, let us out, let us out in the middle, the bypass, all three places could use it. You know, they said they're turning dirt now, things have changed. The rabbi, nice guy at the synagogue, he probably didn't want to go along with it because he knew the developments around it didn't want Arcadia, but you guys screwed up. So maybe, maybe election time coming up to listen. You know, the gentleman before me talked about Perry Warren, nice guy, Santa Sarah, I got my regrets with him, but there are elections coming up too. So are they just sticking their name out or what, you know? You got to watch that. You said, election time coming, maybe, maybe things will change. Also with the, with this Toll Brothers deal, the land that the township's getting, is it going to be deed restricted? Because I don't trust you guys, you're liable to sell it. Is it going to be deed restricted, that it can't be built on? And, you know, Toll Brothers likes to, you know, mention, oh, you can use it for recreation and stuff. I remember one guy that was up here, he's passed on now, but he was chairman of the board and he drained our reserves for parks. We had a lot of money, a lot of money in reserves, a lot more than we should have, and he drained it and spent it all on parks. Johnny don't know that because he was sleeping. But anyhow, you know, try that bypass deal. Since they're turning dirt now, people's minds might have changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Frank McCarron, Delancey Court. There were two items you talked about at the last meeting, I just want to follow up on. One was the American Rescue Funds and you're coming up with a list of things that you want to spend it on. You know, at the same time, we've applied for a safer grant for the third year in a row, we've been turned down twice, and we really need to hire weekend firefighters. And so what I would suggest is whatever list you come up with of things you want to spend, come up with a list, but don't spend until you find out if you're going to get the safer grant. Because if you don't go to get the safer grant in terms of spending the funds, I would put hiring weekend firefighters at the type, the top of that list. The other thing that you talked about was Brixmore and the traffic study. I know that does with traffic flow, but I don't know if it does anything with roadways. I mean, Eagle Road by the Village Shopping Center is now getting really beat up. You know, all the increased traffic is really taking a toll. And I don't know whether or not Brixmore has any obligation to, you know, help offset that. Is it just a question of traffic flow or is there some obligation on their part to really restore that road? Because the amount of extra traffic that's come from that, from all the shopping development is really incredible.
You're talking about the Eagle Road near the farmer's market?
Yes.
That's owned by a different company. And a couple of years ago, I complained to them directly about the potholes and the fact that we have a Newtown ambulance squad that has to use that word. And I, I agree with you, this, potholes have reappeared. So, you know, maybe the township or somebody, the police department should get in touch with that owner.
So that's a private road, Eagle Road?
Yes.
Oh, wow. South Eagle Road, private road.
South Eagle Road, by the, by the farmer's market.
So it seems Brixmore brings the extra traffic and someone else is going to have to pay for the repair.
Well, that's not necessarily true. I mean, I go there to shop at the farmer's market, I don't even go into Brixmore.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I do remember you bringing that up before, John.
Gentlemen, thank you again. Andrew Neville from Newtown Crossing, Fair Oaks out of Eagle Ridge. To kind of extrapolate on what we were hearing earlier, I just wanted to talk about kind of like the traffic situation. And could I confirm one thing? I think I heard that actually the U-turn at Buck Road southbound has not been fully approved. Is that correct?
The highway occupancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the highway occupancy permit has not been issued yet.
Correct, yep.
But the, but the U-turn at Buck Road, Mill Pond and Diamond Drive has not been approved whatsoever. And that's like the preferred route that everyone from Arcadia would take.
I'm, I'm lost in the language, yes.
So basically, at the beginning of this, Pendott provided insight on the options that everyone's referring to. At that point, they moved forward with option four and moved forward with the final engineering of that. So basically, as part of that, the developer submits the plans to Pendott for their review. So they've gone back and forth a few times, but the permit has not been issued at this time.
So basically, my biggest thing there is, you know, my father, God bless his soul, he always said, measure twice, cut once. We've now taken down acreage of wood that is building a development that now actually doesn't have an approved Pendott exit out of. So, I mean, I just want to say that is my biggest concern, especially because even up until this point, over the past seven to 10 days, since they've started that destruction of those trees that are hundreds of years old, so far I've witnessed someone, as I'm coming northbound on Buck Road, trying to cross the bypass, a construction worker standing in the middle of the lane, stopping northbound or southbound bypass traffic as they're trying to turn onto Buck Road, stopping it so that a truck can try and back out because they know if they turn right, they're not allowed to turn anywhere. Imagine the accidents could have happened there. And that was at four o'clock on a weekday. I've also now seen two Pico drivers also try to, or actually make that U-turn at Mill Pond and Diamond Road. And sure, like, they're not quote unquote, "construction workers" on the project, but if we're talking semantics, if they're working at that site, they're construction workers. So that is my biggest issue to start with. But also, if even Pico were ever to be idiotic enough to approve that U-turn, does anyone on the board here actually live in Newtown Crossing or across the street off Diamond Drive? Whether the Richborough Road, Buck Road side? So I would encourage everyone to actually go sit at that area around even post-COVID, or this pre-COVID would be even worse. Post-COVID, try and sit around there, just sit in a beach chair and watch the traffic try to get out of those neighborhoods around rush hour. And then especially when it's during school season, it's even worse. So imagine if you have now, if we have 60 homes, all right, that's 60 homes that are probably going to have 60 cars, could be 120 cars, if they have teens, could be 170 cars. All of those people could be trying to get out of that neighborhood all at once to make a right onto Buck Road South and to make a U-turn to get back to that bypass. There is no significant study that shows that a significant amount of those cars are going to go southbound on Buck Road. If anything, they'll try to cut through Newtown Crossing, which then creates an even bigger juncture at Richborough Road and Mill Pond Road. And that could be an even worse section because you have kids going to both Council Rock North and Council Rock South. So if you account for that amount of vehicles, not even just for 60 homes, it doesn't mean 60 cars, this is no longer the 1940s. It can be a four or five car home at this point. You never know how many cars are going to be coming in and out of there. And especially if Pendott has not even approved a way in and out of that neighborhood, I feel it's disgraceful that they even try to level any trees whatsoever. And when this all falls apart, I hope they're made to pay. And that's the biggest thing I wanted to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Jane Caruso, Nine Chestnut Drive in Newtown Crossing. I am not politically astute and I don't know how all this stuff works. I'm just here to beg. I have to believe in my head that when you all come to this table, you come to accept some very common tasks and responsibilities, but I believe in my heart that you're here because you want those responsibilities. And one of them is, I believe, public safety. So I'm just here to beg and plead that you listen to Mr. Pete here and consider two C over four. We, in the development, I, I can speak for everybody there, are devastated by what's happening, we understand it, we accept there's going to be building, but I'm just here to beg, to just consider our safety. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Any others? Seeing none, we'll move along. And let me find my agenda. I think we're up to the planning, planning commission, reports of boards, committees and commissions. Yes. Ms. Driscoll, welcome.
Good evening, Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Planning Commission, here to give you a brief rundown of our February 15th meeting. We had two zoning hearing board applications. The first one being Thomas Hoops and Elizabeth Castaglioni of 124 St. Phil Road. The applicants are seeking a special exception to construct a new house on a non-conforming lot and a variance to allow a building envelope area of 2,384 square feet or 20,000 square feet are required. The lot is just a little less than one acre. The original house had been damaged beyond repair in a fire and the new structure will be less non-conforming than the original. Our vice chair, Craig Deutsch, as a member of the Joint Historic Commission, urged the planning commission to support the application as the owners of the property have worked with the Joint Historic Commission to preserve the historic barn and outbuildings after the main house was destroyed. We recommend that the supervisors support this application. Our next application was Deborah Watts and Martha Holland of 128 St. Phil Road. The applicants seek a, seek a special exception and a variance to build an extension on their house for a first floor bedroom and bathroom. They plan to make this a permanent home and their goal is to make this a comfortable home to eventually age in place. Their lot predates the current ordinance and to comply with the ordinance, any building would have to be only 12 feet wide. These two applicants are next door neighbors and are supportive of each other's plans. The commission recommends the two families, commands the two families for their efforts to preserve these older properties and modernize them. Under new business, the Economic Development Committee has asked the planning commission support for its recommendation that township include electric vehicle charging stations as a permitted use in the revamping of the business comments, the LI, the OLI zoning districts. The planning commission fully supports this, understanding that it will need to draft a new use ordinance with specific performance standards, and we would recommend that once an appropriate use ordinance is drafted, the use should be permitted in other commercial zoning districts. We realize that this might require considerations like locations of the stations within parking fields so as not to disrupt commerce. The commission is here to work with the county and the joint chair in creating a workable new use ordinance in anticipation of this need. And that was all we had. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Any questions for Ms. Driscoll?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I, I think I sent forward to the board the fact that, that I have already brought this up with Mr. Poganowski at the Joint Zoning Council, to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, which I think is March 3rd, and I hope the board consensus is that we should promote this use not only in the LI district, but as you mentioned, in other districts. I guess it would have to be joint chair wide.
Yes.
So hopefully, I know if you've attended before and we can get some more input when we bring this up. Mr. Poganowski has already given me a couple of samples from other townships on how they've drafted regulations for electric vehicle charging stations.
Correct. And I will attend the next joint chair meeting when it occurs and we will discuss this.
Yep, March 3rd.
Great. Mr. Claba?
Yeah, I, well, I think this is a great idea because I think it is the wave of the future. And when these are placed, or suggested to be placed in the LI and the OLI zoning districts, they're going to be placed on individual commercial properties, correct?
Correct.
We're not going to be the ones paying for these stations. They would just have to agree, or since they would have permission, they could go ahead and put these in their place of business in the parking lots. Okay. Now, and this may, this may not come into any kind of discussion at the moment, but what will this do to any kind of parking calculations since they're, they are going to be taking up certain parking areas? Is that something that has to be under consideration?
Well, that's, yeah, absolutely. We're going to have to decide where, especially in commercials like Brixmore and the Acme, where they're going to be located. where they're going to be located. I think that, I mean, this is new, this is something that all three townships are very eager to discuss, and we're going to have to be very careful about where we place them. And we probably will have to take a parking spot here and there, but hopefully, as far away as possible from the main parking areas where the congestion is.
Well, that's another question that I would have. I mean, I would assume that we would have to make some arrangements for a few of these spots to be in a handicapped area.
Yes. It's a lot to consider, right? You know, I mean, they're going to be everywhere in the next few years, and we just want to be sure that where we place them is the right place to put them.
And maybe if everyone--
And we will discuss that at the Joint Chair.
If everyone gets an electric car, I'll be able to get gas cheaper, so.
Yeah, probably in the next 10 years, everybody's going to have an electric car.
Oh, rocket ships.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. Move on to individual Board Member reports. I had two items to report. One is that the Finance Committee met for the first time this year. It's not a full committee, there's two members. We need at least five to be able to, or at least four to be able to have a quorum, so it would be nice to have more than that so we could, you know, account for anyone being out. But anyway, we did meet, we talked about how we could reuse our personal connections to maybe recruit members. I offered to redouble the efforts to look at what's on the township website in terms of vacancies for committees. We talked about a few other things that we did. One of the Board, one of the members was new, so we walked through the, how the budget's put together with all the schedules and the general fund and all the different funds. We also talked a little bit about the American Relief Program. And so we did that, we had spent an hour together, so. What we would, if anyone's interested in being a member of the Finance Committee, you can send your resume to Township, to Olivia Kovenko, and we can sort of make an appointment. The other, the meeting that, the other item that I wanted to bring up was the Township Manager and I got a letter from the Borough Council President, Susan Turner. She was making a rather late request for us to get it on the agenda, but maybe, maybe for something for a future agenda. The Borough is doing a Local Services Administration Grant, if I have the acronym correct, and they were asking us to join them in putting our name on that grant. It's for a million dollars, and it's for Frost, the Frost Lane Bridge Project, which had, we had mentioned a couple of years ago in a, we had a discussion about that in a work session a couple of years ago. So Township Manager and I conferred, and we said, we're not rejecting the idea, but we, right now, the township has its own local services grant that we're pursuing for the interconnections in the, of the sidewalks in the business commons. And the fact that this was the night-before request, and the fact that we can look at it in the future, there'll be, I, we believe that there'll be future opportunities to join them if the Board so desires. So I didn't want, I wanted to make sure everyone knew about that going forward. Any questions for me? Mr. Vice Chairman, you have any?
Yes, I do have one thing, I think. On February 16, I attended the Basics of the Sunshine Act webinar presented by the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records, which, among other things, reviewed what constituted a meeting, what constituted a meeting covered by the Sunshine Act. And I asked if members of an official committee can participate remotely via speakerphone or Zoom and be counted as part of the quorum to therefore make it an official meeting. My main concern was the viability of Newtown Township's committees, some of which are having problems establishing in-person attendance due to concerns about COVID, busy schedules, family issues, traveling restrictions, et cetera. The answer I was given by the Open Records Department was, for second-class townships such as Newtown, the answer was yes. But I know our solicitor has a different opinion, and he can state that after I finish my comments. But meanwhile, during that discussion, I conferred with Mr. Lewis, and he pointed out that if, for example, we needed to adjust the sizes of committees so that it's easier for them to establish a quorum of in-person people, for example, the, let's say, the Economic Development Committee, of which I am liaison, is supposed to have seven members, they will need a four-four quorum, and sometimes that's been difficult to achieve, and they did not achieve it at the last meeting. But if we were to consider changes to these committees, we would have to go to the ordinances, which you pointed out, Mr. Lewis. But when I examined the ordinances, I found some problems with ordinances involving two of our committees that may require updating. And I can talk about this under New Business rather than getting into the details here, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
New Business is fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis? I'm welcome, I'll come back. Okay, Protocol would state that this--
Thank you.
Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer would be next.
I'm happy to say that, for the first time, the Environmental Advisory Committee was able to meet this year where we did our reorganization. We're working on presenting a Plastics Resolution in the beginning of April to the supervisors and giving them lots of information to digest way before that. We have a different Chair now. Elaine McCarron is our Chair. And also, we spoke about how pleased we were about the LED streetlight program progressing, as was in the Engineers Report. And that was it. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Davis, or Mr. Clavro?
I believe Mr. Clavro is the ranking member.
I see the ranking. Okay. I'll put that on the list, so.
As ranking member, I'll defer to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Clavro. I have the Parking Rec Report for February 23rd. Registered today for the following upcoming programs: Virtual Mahjong, their Saturday Morning Art Series called Movie Madness, and Stop Animation 1. And a reminder, summer's around the corner, camp registration is open for our day camps, ages 4th or 8th grade. Outcoming community events include e-recycling on March 19th and a Touch a Truck on April 14th. You can also receive discount, purchase discount movie tickets at the Parks Rec Office, and also discount Sesame Place tickets will be coming soon. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I like those discount Sesame Street tickets, Sesame Place tickets. All right. Next on the agenda is public hearing and land development, which I don't believe we have either. So we'll move along to reports of officials, and we'll go to our engineer.
Thank you. The item we have tonight is a PennDOT Traffic Signal Maintenance Resolution. This is a standard PennDOT document for all municipalities that have traffic signals and are required to maintain them. In the past, this is a new process for PennDOT. In the past, there were individual maintenance agreements for each signal, but now there's a sort of a blanket resolution and agreement for the municipality for all the signals. So this is, again, just sort of a standard document that PennDOT requires, so we would recommend approval of the maintenance agreement and resolution.
So it's a standard document, but a new process?
It is, yep.
Okay, got it. Anyone like to make that motion? Any second? Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further conversation and discussion with the Board? From the public? Seeing none? Call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since Ms. Snyder mentioned the LED streetlight procurement program, I just wonder if you can give us a couple of words about how that's going currently?
Yep, so you may recall, in the past, we had a meeting with DVRPC and Keystone Lighting in regards to next steps. At that time, you know, it was discussed to, you know, continue the efforts. Basically, the Township Public Works Department provided Keystone with the required information at that time. They were looking to the next phase, and they were going to provide the township with some more information they sort of mentioned in the springtime. So I've reached out to them, hopefully we'll hear from them soon, and then we can provide a little bit more of an update, but that's where we stand right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Solicitor, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The lone item on our report this evening is the two zoning hearing board applications about which Ms. Driscoll briefed the Board. Does the Board wish to take a position on either one of those applications?
Is there consensus to? Well, the Planning Commission suggested that we recommend, or at least support that position. Anybody have a need to do that? Or we just let it go without?
Yeah, that's generally--
That's generally what we do.
What would follow from that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I don't see any burning desire.
Cricket, so I'll take that as a no.
Yep.
So that concludes our report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Solicitor. We turn to our manager, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General Fund balance as of this evening is $4,453,583. The planned expiration is before the Board with no action required. This evening, we have Chief Forsyth for his monthly Emergency Services Department report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to report for the month of January. We responded to 109 calls. Out of those 109 calls, 56 were EMS calls, five were dwelling fires, 25 were false alarms, seven were traffic accidents, three building fires, one wires call, one special assignment, one nursing home, four water flow alarms, one fumes-in call, one fuel spill, two carbon monoxide alarms, and one chimney fire. We completed 12 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township and four in Newtown Borough. On the second page of the report, I broke down the calls for municipality. Total calls for service in Newtown Borough is 14. Emergency Services responded to 11 of the calls for service, and NFA responded to two. And both departments responded on one dwelling fire. Total calls between the Borough and Township were 98. That's my report for January.
Any questions for the Chief?
Chief, just one question.
Yes, sir.
It's been brought up a few times about our weekend firefighters. How are we doing?
Right now, we just finished our policy. We are, we are struggling along. We're able to get apparatus out on the street. We're not always fully staffed, but we are putting a few people on the street. So right now, we're holding our own, and hopefully, we will have our policy in effect at our February meeting to start the stipend program for the weekend, and hopefully, that will address some of our issues. So I will keep you advised. The Township did give us extra money for the stipend program this year, so hopefully, that will help us out, and I will keep you advised as the months go on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to mention the stipend program. I thought we had put some money in the budget for that, so.
Yep.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have two other items under my report. Both are capital purchases for the year 2022. Both were budgeted for, the first of which is the, a Ford F-150 for the Emergency Services Department as a command vehicle with associated upfitting through Havas Incorporated. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to purchase a Ford F-150 for the Emergency Services Department from Chapman Auto and upfitting through Havas Incorporated through Co-Stars in the amount of $63,108.64.
Do we have such a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions? This is the one that we budgeted 70,000.
That's correct. There's 70,000 budgeted out of the Fire Association Capital Fund.
And this is coming in at 63,108, so, very good. I always like to point out that we fall, that we fall on the right side of that number, of the budgeted number. So, any other, any other questions? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Final item I have, Mr. Chairman, is the purchase of a park and rec vehicle. We had budgeted a total of $35,000, and this vehicle is anticipated to be financed. So the appropriate motion would be, motion to authorize the purchase of a Ford F-150 for Park and Rec Department from Chapman Auto through Co-Stars in the amount of $34,925.
Do we have such a motion?
No motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further questions from the Board?
Yes, you know, considering the current interest in electric vehicles, I think the Township should lead by example by integrating electric vehicles into its municipal fleet. Perhaps purchasing an electric truck for parks and rec might be, that department might be the ideal department to be at the forefront of an effort to establish a mindset in the community that encourages acceptance of electric vehicles. I think it would be a good idea to pursue that option before we go ahead and purchase a gas guzzling, another gas guzzling F-150. I know that the Ford Company has an F-150 Lightning, and consequently, I thought maybe we could table this motion until we can research the purchase of that option. I know that the current vehicle that's being used by the Parks and Rec Department is pretty old, but all I'm asking is that we look into purchasing an electric F-150 for the Parks and Rec Department. So I think I made a motion to table this until we can look into, into that.
Okay, so a motion to table, do we have a second?
I second.
So a motion and a second to table. Any discussion on the motion to table?
How long would this take to get this truck? Is it, is it, is it necessary? Is it needed right now?
It is a necessary purchase. The vehicle that they're using at this time is rather old, and we have the camp season starting up, so.
Okay. I know there's a table and a motion. I mean, my suggestion will be to, at this-- I mean, my suggestion will be to, at this late moment here, that this is being brought up, is maybe to go ahead and authorize the purchase of this vehicle, and then from this point on, consider hybrids or electric cars for the staff going forward.
I would ditto that thought, that we don't want to slow this down anymore, but going forward, this would be like a point in the road that we go forward and look for electric.
So we kick the can down the road, I guess? The electric can down the road.
At this...
Well, we, let's vote on the...
Yep, let's vote on them. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. Those in favor of tabling this action, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No. Okay, so it's back on. So we're back to the, we're back to the original motion. And we were, we had comment?
Could I ask another question? You mentioned it's the camp season. How is this truck used by Parks and Rec, especially with regard to that?
Well, the transport supplies, what are, if it's an art camp, it's art supplies, whatever camp it is, they have, they have things that they need to transport to these various locations.
Okay, I get it. Thanks.
Soccer goals and nets, and yeah.
I have, I have a statement to make, which is, any electric vehicle that's purchased now is subject to a tax rebate of up to $7,000, I believe. So I think it's worth looking into whenever, you know, our next vehicles are, I don't know if that tax rebate will still be there, but I know it's there now.
And I think it's a good idea. I don't think it's going to be cost effective. I'd be more interested in the cost of the vehicle, and then we'd also have to install chargers, right? So looking at that as well. But I'm not denying that's a good way to go, but I think cost effectiveness wise, it may not be right now.
Well, as I understand it, it takes up to 20,000 miles before an electric vehicle becomes, saves money, and that also involves the environment becoming more environmentally friendly than gas. Do you know how many miles are on that truck currently?
No.
But 2,008 must be way over 20,000.
Likely.
Okay, thank you.
But I think, I think we have established a marker that from here on, we'll look at electric vehicles and the option and the cost effectiveness of it. So I don't think we've actually voted on this yet, though. So any further comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of purchasing the truck for the rec, Parks and Rec, F-150 for Park and Rec's department, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes four one. All right, that brings us to reports of bills, minutes, bills, and other reports, so. And Madam Assistant Secretary, Assistant Treasurer, you're on. That's a mouthful.
I made a correction to the minutes. I saw a problem with the minutes. I contacted Mica, so hopefully, there's, you know, a change to them where it says authorization to purchase a Falcon asphalt recycler in the amount of $433,782.50. It actually has an extra three in it there, so $43,782.50. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 9th, 2022.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, I too, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Phil.
Oh, I too would ask for a correct, not correction, but addition. Under reports of committees, boards, and commissions, last paragraph, which starts with my name, the last sentence, he heard some negative comments. After that word comments, I would like to place them there, made by a Newtown Township supervisor about this, and again, thank the residents for their generosity. I believe that's what I said.
I don't think that's appropriate. You already did it at a meeting. What supervisors do outside of this has nothing, that have nothing to do with any Newtown business.
Well, I never said who the supervisor is.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's your technique. That's your bullying technique.
It's not bullying technique, you have a guilty conscience, Mr. Mack. I mean, I did say...
I don't have no damn guilty conscience. I have the right to say anything I like to anybody outside of this room, basically.
For a man who's been such a stickler for the minutes, you're denying me of making the change of what I said at these, at that time? And I did say they were made by a Newtown Township supervisor.
Kyle, why did you do that?
It wasn't Kyle. It wasn't Dennis, and it wasn't Ellen. Figure it out. But I'd like to have that changed made, and if not, I will dispute the minutes.
So we have two changes proposed for the minutes. One is the change in the dollar amount for the asphalt, and one is for the comments from the member. Shall we take them one at a time?
Well, I believe there was a motion made to approve the minutes as already amended by Ms. Snyder.
I already corrected on the, the amount of the asphalt.
Okay, so that's not a necessary change to make. That's in the minutes as they stand. So there's a motion to approve the minutes as written. Mr. Calabro has asked to have an amendment to that, so in order to consider Mr. Calabro's amendment, we'd have to amend the motion to approve the minutes to include Mr. Calabro's additional request and vote on that, as it were.
And who were the motion and the second?
I believe Ms. Snyder made the motion. I don't know who seconded it.
And so would you care if the motion and the second to revise your motion to include Mr. Calabro's comments?
Sure.
I'm not taking back my second, so I don't know what you do in that case.
Well, we ask for another second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the, we have amended the motion and the second, so now we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes with both of those changes. Am I correct? All right. Any further discussion?
I'm not really sure what the amendment is here, so I don't know how to vote on that. I'm not clear.
Amendment?
Now, I know what you're saying. I don't recall the exchange and how it played out and what it should look like.
And I wonder if you, because your phone went out.
I dropped off the call, so I don't know if I missed it or if I just didn't, I'm not following it.
Well, you could abstain.
I can abstain.
I will do that, then.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Any from the public?
Frank McCann, Delancey Court. So I was at the last two meetings, and there does seem to be some sort of animosity among the members. I'm not sure why, but it'd be great if you guys could all work it out in private and try to keep this out of the public discussion, public minutes, because to me, it just reflects negatively on everyone. It made me feel uncomfortable. You know, I like to shout out to the restaurant, but, you know, it's just not something that, I don't think it reflects well on all of you. Maybe Mr. Sander could, you know, do be a go-between or something and try to keep this to just cordial. We want everyone here to be cordial to each other, and to be, I think, set by example. Try to be cordial within the meeting and have your disagreements outside the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. The only thing I would say is that was, what was said in the meeting, but it can be a prompt for us to come up with a set of rules for ourselves, maybe. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the accepting the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Motion passes three one one. All right, move on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills list. Total of all funds is $197,859.18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of paying the bills as described, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the total inter-fund transfers in the amount of $240,000.
Okay, is that a motion? Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call the question. Those in favor of approving the bills as moved, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five nothing. Okay, we come to our second round of public comment.
I'm limping because I'm getting too old to spar with our heavyweight wrestlers. I'm Terry Christensen. I live on Kirkwood Drive, 67 Kirkwood Drive. I have a question about the Lower Doolington Trail, the work that's being done, particularly, specifically at Stanford Place. We see, I shouldn't say we, our CEO has noticed that there are three curb cuts being made, but not four, and I suspect that is because we don't currently have a sidewalk in front of or adjacent to our property. But I can tell you that we have, are, we are hiring an architect for it over to revisit the master plan for that campus, and I strongly anticipate, I shouldn't, that's a poor choice of words, I anticipate that we will have a sidewalk both in front of and on the side of the property, and I'm wondering if it's possible to install those curb cuts now so that we don't have to do that later. So that's the question I have. Also, there is, this is a personal issue. There has been a street light out at the intersection of Upper Silver Lake Road, southernmost intersection, southernmost intersection of Upper Silver Lake Road, Claire Drive, and Kirkwood Drive. That strikes me as an ideal place for a pilot project for an LED light if we can't get it fixed, speaking to someone who regularly crosses that street with a black dog. Thank you.
Mr. Christensen, could you state one more time what the intersection was for the curb cuts?
Oh, yes. It's on Upper Silver Lake Road. To the east side is Claire Drive, to the west is Kirkwood Drive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that, was that the LED, though, or was that the curb cuts?
No, that's, that's where I'd like to see the pilot project for the LED. The curb is, is Lower Doolington and Stanford Place.
We got that. Thank you.
Thank you.
John D. April, Newtown Green. Biggest and still the best, Newtown Green. Okay, it was brought up about the LED lighting. We're looking in to put LED street lighting, but don't our rules and regulations for businesses say no LED lighting on our signs? Think I'm right about that?
Yes, but that's...
Because, because that was one of, one of the sticklers that went on for something stupid like LED lighting when Wawa was up here. You know, I know LED lighting was shot down all over on Sycamore Street and all that stuff. You know, if you're going to do streetlights, why not let the business have size? It's the thing. You talk about electric cars and everything. I know you have one, Dennis, but did the other two that voted, no, did they have electric cars? Did they invest in one? No. And, yeah, I'm looking into trucks.
I just ordered one.
Okay, good for you, if that's what you like. Just hope you don't get stuck on the highway for three hours and, you know. Also, that ship that's floating around in the ocean with the luxury, mostly luxury cars on there and Volkswagen's and stuff, started with a car battery, electric car battery. And I don't know the status of that now. I didn't see anything on the news today, the other day, but they took the crew off the ship, just floating around out in the ocean. But anyhow, you know, they'll look into that. And the planning commission and whatever, I'm pretty sure it's in your rules, no LED lighting for signs. And you brought up, have rules for yourself. You don't have rules for yourself. It's called Roberts Rules. Brigadier General, Brigadier General Roberts did it many, many years ago, and it's been updated so often. Okay. I mean, I totally agree with Phil. I mean, you've got a supervisor up there that's on social media and always talks about the board supervisors. He has a disclaimer down at bottom, real little, that it's his opinions and not the board supervisors, but he incites the public, although they don't listen to him because they're not here, you know. He gets these, these Karens that are always on there, and, you know, some of them even live in the township, and, you know, giving comments and all that stuff, you know. Yeah, he'll listen to them, he'll bring, he'll bring the stuff up because he don't know any better, but still, he's giving out misinformation. We brought that up before, it was brought up before. He gives out misinformation. He caused one township some heartache with one of the things he posted. Why don't you guys censor that? You know, he, like I said, he puts a disclaimer on there, doesn't belong to the supervisors, but it's all he does is talk about the supervisor, board supervisor. I think you ought to censor him on his social media stuff. I mean, all right, all right, he went to school, went to college, he got a degree in the, you know, computer science or whatever. You know, that doesn't give him the right. Why didn't he volunteer when he was getting all Mr. Lewis about improving our, the township's website? If he knows so much about it, why didn't he volunteer his time for that? He always writes that on his thing, too, that, oh, I spent so many hours this and this morning. Only supervisor ever did that. Over 25 years I've been here, he's the only supervisor that ever puts on there. Oh, I spent so much time with the public, so much time with this meeting, so much time with that meeting. Come on!
Mr. David, could you wind it up?
Why?
Could you, could you wind it up?
Could I wind it up? You give me a time limit now?
No.
Do you want that to hit the papers? The reporter here, he wants to put a time limit on me? What are you, Scott Harp? You want to put a time limit on everybody? What's the matter with you?
I'm not going to do that.
What's the matter with you, Dennis? He talks in your ear? Poor Phil had to sit next to him all that time.
Thank you. And the other public comment? All right, we'll move on to old business. I have one item to report on old business, and that is the fire services agreement with Newtown Borough. Meetings, we held a meeting last Thursday, and we... Meetings, we held a meeting last Thursday, and we, some of the negotiators were new to the process, so we took a little bit of time to bring them up to date. We can, we also compared some numbers around compensation. We're confident, we actually have meetings scheduled for Monday, the 28th, and Thursday, the 3rd, if needed, because we think we're close, we're confident that we're close enough with Monday, with Monday, the 28th, that we might have a number. There might be some other terms that we need to work out in terms of term of the agreement and how to handle capital expenses. But between those two meetings, we hope we have something to bring back to, back to the board and certainly early, early March, our March, our next March meeting, March 9th. So that's, that's my report. We had a meeting, we have a couple of meetings scheduled, and we're making progress. Any questions about that? All right, well, no other, any other old business? We have a new business site.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned previously, there are some problems with our committees. One is the Economic Development Committee, and the other is the Tech and Communications Committee, as far as they're described in the ordinances. For example, the Economic Development Committee, it says there is hereby established the Newtown Township Economic Development Committee, which shall be composed of 11 persons. It turns out that our reorganization papers said there were, and our website says there are only six plus one vacancy for a total of seven. If indeed the ordinance is true that 11 needs to be 11 persons, we will never achieve a quorum, which would require six people to be physically present, and that's not going to happen. Also, under the Technology Commission, Committee, under the ordinances, the mission of, it says, the mission of the Newtown Township Technology Committee shall be to promote employee and voluntary efficiency, maximize customer service, and reduce township costs through the use of technology. We have since revised that on, under Resolution 2018 to include a different mission statement. And also, somewhere along the line, we renamed this committee, the Newtown Township Technology and Communications Committee. So therefore, you know, I would ask the solicitor to look into this and come back with the appropriate resolutions to make necessary amendments to the ordinances for these two committees. As it currently stands, the Economic Development Committee will never have a quorum to have an official meeting, and that's something that, you know, any resident can complain about if they knew about this.
I have a exception, I have a suggestion. Let me move this. Rather than ask the solicitor to do something at this time, and especially since this wasn't on the agenda, and we don't want to spend money, and we can't spend money on a non-agenda item, I would say we ask the administration to do kind of an inventory of where we are with our committees, and what vacancies we have, and then.
Well, I would ask, I would ask our solicitor right now, when the Economic Development Committee meets, how many people, how many members have to be physically present? Four or six to form a quorum according to the current ordinance?
Is it up to 11?
No, it doesn't say that. It says it shall be composed of 11.
Okay, so I would defer to our solicitor for determining.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order here.
Yes.
I do believe when there is, there is not a quorum at any committee, since the committees are advisory, they can discuss topics, but they just can't vote on anything. So they can, they can discuss, they can even give a report on what they discussed, just that they can't vote on, so they still can do business, just no voting. So although we want a full committee, but I find 11, I mean, our planning commission's only nine, and that's, that's one of our major, major commissions. I don't know why we had 11 for this.
I don't either.
Well, that's why I'm suggesting we take a look at these ordinances and we adjust the number of committee members so that we can, the committees can operate legally, let's say, and have minutes, official minutes that go out to the public. Without an official meeting, you cannot do minutes. Those minutes will not be available to the public, the public won't know what the committee discussed, and, you know, this is a matter of transparency, of public transparency.
And just like I mentioned, the Finance Committee, we only had two, two members.
And the only way, the only way the public knows is by your reports, but I'm sure there's much more to it than what you were able to report.
So again, my suggestion is that we get an inventory of our committee structure and how many people are, how many vacancies we have where they are.
And just in, on the, on the topic of the Economic Development Committee, when that committee was reestablished, sort of in the infancy of COVID.
COVID.
I believe, I think it was a consensus of the board that we keep it to about seven people to try to, try to get people on that committee. So I think that's where that came from, but we can certainly look into those two committees that you've mentioned, Mr. Mack, and.
Also Parks and Rec is down to three.
Yeah, and from my understanding, Mr. Sanders, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a meeting that takes place without a quorum is an informal meeting, and minutes can be taken, it just, it's just needs to be noted on there that there wasn't a quorum and it was an informal meeting?
And no action.
Right.
Can be taken.
Right.
Yes.
If you have a character, can you say? Or remember if it may?
Yes.
I'll take notes, I'll call them notes, and I leave them to bed and put them on the website, so you're not.
So if it's no quorum, you could still have minutes or notes, and they are published on the website, is that correct?
With a disclaimer that.
I never call them minutes, I call them notes.
Notes. Mrs. Solicitor, is that a good way to go?
Yeah, again, I think the limitation is just that they can't take action.
Notes versus minutes and action. Any other discussion on this topic? Any other new business?
Mr. Chair, I, again, all this new stuff has to go by the solicitor, but tonight we heard discussions about our two elected officials, Senator Santisaro and Representative Warren, wanting to be involved with the Arcadia issue, and I was just, wanted to make the suggestion, if we could direct, and again, Mr. Solicitor, I don't know if this is a vote or it can be done informally, if we could direct our manager to maybe write a letter to each office asking, you know, basically how and what they want to do by being involved in this, this situation. So I mean, Mr. Solic, I mean, is this something we.
Yeah, this would fall under, under the act, this would fall under business arising during the meeting, and if the board wishes to take action, you'd have to make a motion to amend the agenda to consider it, pass that motion, and then make a motion that does not involve spending money or entering into a contract. Advising the manager to do that work would not involve entering into a contract or spending money. So you can have a motion to amend the agenda. Once that passes, you can make a motion to authorize the manager to take that action and take that vote as well.
I would support the action and the vote. Any, any others? I mean, I'll make that, I'll make, in fact, I'll make that motion to amend the agenda. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Okay, good. Any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of amending the agenda this evening for this item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes four, one, to amend the agenda.
Now, do we need a motion to ask the township manager to issue a letter to our elected officials, Senator Santisaro and Representative Perry Warren, in regards to, I guess, their opinion and their solutions, possible solutions to the Arcadia traffic issue?
Well, let me, let me ask you a question. Is that, is that going to be one letter that represents the position of the board as a whole? Because as we previously discussed, I am recommending against the board or the township taking a unified position in response to the public comments that were made, because it is potentially a violation of the settlement agreement.
But we're not taking a stance in this regard, we're just asking for their opinion and their possible solutions to the situation.
Okay, then I think it needs to be very clear what the content of the letter will say.
Well, the gentleman is sitting right next to me, so.
Okay.
I mean, is it, is it clear what you're being directed to do?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess the direction is to contact, I'll just, the two elected officials, the state senator and our state representative, in regards to what their opinion is and what their possible solution may be to the traffic issue of Arcadia.
So I'm asking Senator Santisaro and Representative Warren what their opinions are related to the access options for Arcadia.
Correct. Is that good? That's fine. You're asking a question, seeking information, that's certainly fine. That's my motion.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment that when talking with Senator Santisaro's Secretary Rose today, she wanted to know what our opinion was to pass on to Senator Santisaro and Perry Warren, so.
Well, I think that runs into what our solicitor says in regards to us giving our opinion in this matter, is that correct? Correct. Okay. I mean, I'm assuming that any of us could talk to Rose individually in her office or whatever.
So I know I, I'm in favor of it.
Well, I made a motion.
Yeah. Yeah, I did. Any further discussion? Comments from the public?
Pete Ancona from Newtown Crossing, just to, to, I guess, clarify my understanding, having spoken with both offices, and this doesn't contradict what I think Phil is, you know, wants to do. I would say in my conversations with Rose originally, and then the other office person yesterday at Senator's office, and, and the senator, or the representative himself and the people in his office, it's, their request of me was to try, you know, they wanted to get something that feel from you, having not been part of all the proceedings. I know it's, to anybody that's participated, you all that have been here through all of this have been clear about, you know, your concerns about option four, but I think, to your point, Ellen, they were basically asking for that, you know, to Phil's point, if, I'm not sure what they're going to say if you ask them that, but that's, that's, is it, that's a different issue, but that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Frank McCarron. So is it possible, without getting Mr. Sanders upset, for individual members to individually let the senator and the assemblyman know how they feel and say, we're precluded from coming to a joint decision, joint consideration, but this is my personal opinion? Because then maybe that would help satisfy them in writing something back to you, just.
The way I understood it, that was okay, and I already committed to do that.
Yes. These folks up here are also residents. They are entitled to bend the ear of their elected representatives, so certainly just can't represent that it's the position of the board or the township that, dot, dot, dot.
Okay, so I think you got your road map.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Just, I'm sorry, I meant, just one last comment. I appreciate that that was brought up because it just reminded me that I think they were interested in either a collective opinion or just the opinion of the individuals. They didn't really specify one thing or the other, they just wanted to kind of hear from somebody other than me, you know, not to speak for you. So, but I do think, you know, given the, the timing of all this, the fact that there's a pending HOP, anyone who feels so moved to, you know, act as an individual, either to me directly to pass on to the senator and the representative, or if you want to talk directly to them, I'd appreciate, you know, either way, if you would let me know what you did, just so I know, because they've asked me, you know, to, to do that. So, you know, it's, I guess I'm just asking if it's, if it could be parallel efforts, I'd rather not wait unless, you know, as an individual, you don't, you're not comfortable doing something until this current request is answered, then, you know, so be it, but please, if you, if you're so moved to, to state your personal opinion to either me or to directly to them or both of us, I'd ask you to do that as soon as you could. Thank you very much.
Okay, we still have a motion on the floor. Let me call the question. Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Any other new business? Any need for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Seeing none, then I will, without objection, I will call this meeting adjourned.